Yes, he is.
Are you ready? He's ready.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Oldham County Fiscal Court. I'm Judge Executive David Vogel. Happy to have you here on the 29th day of June for our special meeting. The meeting is, the agenda for the meeting has been posted for the past 24 hours. This is a special meeting, so we won't be changing any items on the agenda as has been posted. So I'd like to ask everybody who's able now to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask Sheila Fair to please call the roll.
Maj. St. Lincolns.
Here.
Maj. Tyce.
Here.
Maj. Leslie. Maj. Greenwell.
Here.
Maj. Hounds. Maj. Eldridge.
Here.
Maj. Dai.
Here.
Maj. Logstons.
Here.
Judge Vogel.
Here. Having nine members of, or seven of the nine members of the Fiscal Court present, this meeting is now in session. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as posted?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Now, Ms. Fair, will I read our minutes from the June 19th meeting?
June 19th, 2018. The Oldham County Fiscal Court convened at a regular meeting at 2:00 PM with Judge Executive David Vogel, County Attorney John Carter, and the following magistrates in attendance: Brent Lincolns, Wayne Tyce, Steve Greenwell, Chris Hounds, Kevin Eldridge, Bob Dai, and Michael Logstons. Maj. Leslie was absent. Motion made by Maj. Dai and seconded by Maj. Hounds to approve the agenda, adding guardrail agreement with Lake Point subdivision and permit fees for final inspections of in-ground pools. Motion carried unanimously. Motion made by Maj. Hounds and seconded by Maj. Lincolns to approve the meeting minutes of June 5th. Motion carried unanimously. Public comment: Steve Emery, 7100, Apple Orchard Lane, Crestwood, met with Economic Development Committee regarding his concerns with the recently adopted smoking ordinance and will follow up with the Safety Committee next. The following people spoke to the court regarding concerns with the county's smoking ordinance and would like to see an exception for vaping stores added. Steven Spicer at 137 Court 1, Copperstone Point, LaGrange; Keith Hadley, 2009 Clark Point Drive, Crestwood, and owner of Vapor Shop; Tony Florence of Lexington; Troy LeBlanc, Woodmont, Jefferson County; Greg Troutman, 3205 Springhurst Boulevard, Louisville, General Counsel for KSFA; Jason Sutton, Thompsonville, Kentucky; Fig Ramsey, San Diego; Ryan Burkhead, Jefferson County; Kirk Reinke, 2426 E-Mail Avenue, Louisville; Matt Merrill, 1503 Virginia Court, LaGrange; Chris Tucker, Lexington; Jason Underwood, 3301 Trinity Road, Louisville, Consultant to the KSFA. Liz Burrows, Oldham County Health Department stated her support for the recently adopted comprehensive smoking ordinance. Tourism budget presentation: Oldham County Tourism Director Kim Buckler presented information relating to its fiscal year 19 budget and responded to questions from the court. Oldham County Stormwater District: Stormwater Board Chairman William Douglas presented information relating to its budget for fiscal year 19 and responded to questions from the court. County Administration: Payables. Motion made by Maj. Logstons and seconded by Maj. Hounds to approve the payables. Motion carried eight to one. Maj. Greenwell voted no. Budget transfers: Motion made by Maj. Tyce and seconded by Maj. Dai to approve the budget transfers for 2017-18. Budget. Motion carried unanimously. Contract agreements and resolutions: Resolution for the Oldham County Board of Health Tax Rate. Motion made by Maj. Hounds and seconded by Maj. Logstons to authorize the Judge Executive to sign Oldham County Resolution Number 0106-1918 relating to the Oldham County Public Health Tax Rate. Motion carried eight to one. Maj. Dai voted no. URS Work Order for Spring Hill Trace Sidewalk Project. Motion made by Maj. Dai and seconded by Maj. Greenwell to authorize the Judge Executive to sign work order number 051818 with URS relating to the right-of-way services for the Spring Hill Trace Sidewalk Project. Motion carried unanimously. Resolution for the additional permit fee for in-ground pools. Motion made by Maj. Eldridge and seconded by Maj. Hounds to authorize the Judge Executive to sign Resolution Number 0206-1918 relating to an additional permit and inspection fee for in-ground pools. Motion carried unanimously. Committee recommendations: Release of performance bonds and erosion control bonds for Cherrywood Place, Section 5A, 5B, and 6. Motion made by Maj. Eldridge and seconded by Maj. Greenwell at the recommendation of the county engineer to release the following erosion control bonds relating to the Cherrywood Place Sections 5A, 5B, and 6. $35,000 erosion control bond for Section 5A, $23,000 erosion control bond for Section 5B, $5,000 erosion control bond, erosion control plan only, for Section 6, and $26,000 erosion control bond for Section 6. Motion carried unanimously. Motion made by Maj. Eldridge and seconded by Maj. Greenwell at the recommendation of the county engineer to release the following performance bonds relating to the Cherrywood Place. $41,500 performance bond for Section A, $13,000 performance bond for Section 5B, and $78,000 performance bond for Section 6. Motion carried unanimously. Human Resource Committee: Job description for Assistant Planning Director. Motion made by Maj. Logstons and seconded by Maj. Hounds to approve the job description for Assistant Planning Director. Motion carried unanimously. Human Resource Committee: Biometric screening agreement. Motion made by Maj. Logstons and seconded by Maj. Lincolns to authorize the Judge Executive to sign the agreement with on- on health, onsite health solutions relating to biometric screening services. Motion carried unanimously. Road Committee: Recommendation, guardrail agreement, Lake Point subdivision. Motion made by Maj. Hounds and seconded by Maj. Greenwell to move forward with the guardrail project in Lake Point subdivision as per the attached draft letter to the Home Order Association stating the county will pay 50% of the total replacement cost once installed and inspected. Motion carried unanimously. Personnel actions: Parks and Recreation. Motion made by Maj. Logstons and seconded by Maj. Dai to hire the following seasonal Aquatic Center employees effective June 20th. Motion carried unanimously. Kathryn Baines as third-year lifeguard at 8:84 an hour; Ella Leclair and Olivia Ferial as first-year lifeguards at 8:59 an hour; Edward Lentz, Julia Jukaniak, Wendy Cantaro Hernandez, and Michaela Catherson as concession workers at $7.40 an hour. Planning and development: Motion made by Judge Vogel and seconded by Maj. Eldridge to promote Amy Alvey to Assistant Planning Director at $51,125.92 a year effective June 25th. Motion carried unanimously. Motion made by Maj. Hounds and seconded by Maj. Eldridge to accept the resignation of Megan Crey effective June 29th. Motion carried unanimously. Motion made by Maj. Hounds and seconded by Maj. Logstons to transfer Jennifer Shields to Permit Clerk effective June 25th and hire Lori Nun as Administrative Assistant II at $15.40 an hour effective June 25th. Motion carried unanimously. Board appointments: Oldham County Chamber and Economic Development. Motion made by Judge Vogel, seconded by Maj. Tyce, to reappoint Jason Morgan to the Oldham County Chamber and Economic Development Board with a term to expire June 30th, 2021. Motion carried unanimously. South Oldham Fire Protection District. Motion made by Judge Vogel and seconded by Maj. Dai to reappoint Stephen Nethery to the South Oldham Fire Protection District Board with a term to expire June 30th, 2021. Motion carried unanimously. Pee Wee Valley Fire. Motion made by Judge Vogel and seconded by Maj. Eldridge to reappoint Joe McWilliams to the Pee Wee Valley Fire Protection District Board with a term to expire June 30th, 2021. Motion carried unanimously. LaGrange Fire. Motion made by Judge Vogel and seconded by Maj. Tyce to reappoint Gary Jones to the LaGrange Fire Protection District Board with a term to expire June 30th, 2021. Motion carried unanimously. Westport Fire. Motion made by Maj. Eldridge and seconded by Maj. Logstons to reappoint Mike Suter to the Westport Fire Protection District Board with a term to expire June 30th, 2021. Motion carried unanimously. Ballersville Fire. Motion made by Judge Vogel, seconded by Maj. Greenwell, to reappoint Danny Adams to the Ballersville Fire Protection District Board with a term to expire June 30th, 2021. Motion carried unanimously. Second public comment, none. Announcements: Maj. Dai stated Crestwood Road Project with turning lanes is almost complete and in the extreme heat this summer, keep an extra eye on children, elders, and pets. Maj. Eldridge thanked the Stormwater Board members in all they do. Maj. Hounds stated work continues at Ash Avenue and Ash Brick Drive and to follow detour signs when posted. He applauded Fiscal Court for its decision to upgrade the county's emergency radios to an 800 megahertz radio system. He acknowledged the long process and said the upgraded system is almost ready. Maj. Greenwell provided an overview of the board appointment process and how Fiscal Court makes informed decisions when appointing board members. Maj. Lincolns thanked the board members who serve on the nearly 30 boards in Oldham County, most being non-paid boards. Judge Vogel announced Oldham County Day is the third Saturday in July, July 21st, to feature a parade at 10:00 AM followed with the unveiling of the Colonel Oldham, Colonel William Oldham statue along with entertainment, food, and community booths. A webcam similar to the train webcam will be installed, directed at the Courthouse Square and the new statue. Livestream will be available on the county's website and Facebook. Motion made by Maj. Dai and seconded by Maj. Hounds to adjourn the meeting. Motion carried unanimously, and the meeting adjourned at 4:25.
You've heard the reading from our minutes meeting on the June 19th. Is there a motion to accept these minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Time now for public comment. I think we'll probably skip the public comments since we really don't have any members of the community here today for this special meeting. The special meeting was called, for the most part, to basically clear our books at the end of the fiscal year. We'll be paying some bills here in a few minutes, and I'm going to ask Melissa Horn to come forward and review with the court the budget transfers for the end of the fiscal year.
Good afternoon. In your binders is a listing of additional line item transfers we need by the end of the year to keep all the lines in the black. It totals $52,412.26.
Ms. Tyce?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve these transfers.
Are there any questions or anything? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The second part of my business today is to present you the transfers between the general fund, the road fund, the jail fund, and the dispatch fund. And for the year as we stand right now, those transfers total $871,154.78.
Moved and seconded that we approve the transfers among those funds. Is there any discussion on that? Ms. Dai?
Yes, you mentioned a moment ago how this is to clear our books, or Melissa said to clear the books. You know, we kind of catch our financial staff flat-footed this last day to do this and takes a lot of time, so I guess when all these invoices came in and stuff, it's kind of like Santa Claus getting a lot of letters from kids, wasn't it?
There's a lot of keeping up with everything.
Yeah, because you've got a short period of time. Yeah. Well, I just want to thank you all for doing the job that you do.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right. Hearing no one, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right.
Payables?
Yes, next thing here.
In addition to the list that we sent out last night of payables, there are, I believe, four, three more in the back of that section of your binder that were, that came in the mail today. So, you know, I'm always last minute trying to get everything paid, so I just want to call your attention to those additional invoices.
Judge, I'd make a motion we pay the payables along with the Flynn Brothers Bowman Paper and Strong Tire Mechanical.
Is there any discussion on any of these? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next item on the agenda has to do with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Resolution and Contract Agreement. This has to do with the, this is the Settlers Bridge 80-20 Agreement. We're working on that bridge now while school is out over in Settlers Point. Under the bridge program, the state is going to be responsible for 80% of the cost of this bridge, and the county will be responsible for 20%. And the state cost is expected not to exceed $81,174. Is there a motion to allow me to sign this agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Anybody have any discussion about this project?
For our, for our viewers, the, the project was delayed for some sewer line relocations. I think it was supposed to be closed two weeks ago. I understand they've, Maj. Eldridge might update me on this if he knows anything about it, but they were going to try to relocate the sewer line over the top of the new box culvert, and they may have to raise the grade in order to do that so that the, you'd have proper coverage of roadway over the top of the box culvert.
I've not seen anything go on that long.
Okay. So it, it.
Well, I'm not absolutely certain your explanation, the design is correct. Talked with Scott Harris and the OSEA engineers have been discussing this, and the, instead of going under, over the box, they may go under the box now.
Okay.
I'm not certain myself. I, I know that OSEA and, and our engineering department are in agreement on how the sewer line will be handled in relation to the box.
Okay, but that's the reason the construction hasn't started yet.
Right. That's right. Right. But we need to get it going ASAP so it's finished by the time school starts. Anyone else want to comment on this? Hearing none, all in favor. I think we're going to need a roll call vote on this now that I think about it. You don't?
On the back it says.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All ayes, and we've got that covered. The next item on the agenda is requesting executive session to discuss some personal male matters that may lead to employment of one or more employees.
Judge, I'd make a motion that pursuant to KRS 61-810F, that we'd go into executive, this, easy for me to say, executive session.
Yeah, easy for you to say. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. In this, need the Chief Financial Officer and the Human Resources Officer, Chief Smith,